Roll call. Andy Fisher, President. Martha Heller.
President.
Liam Gort, here. Mitch McDonald, Robert Sobol, and Kevin. So that's done. Okay, pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Any issues with the agenda?
Steve Miller?
Yes?
I, I, okay, I can hear you. I couldn't hear you before. So, uh, thank you.
All right.
Myself.
We're gonna switch internets really quick because I was having trouble in my office all day.
Okay.
This is what happened last week.
Should probably just.
Okay, I'm in the meeting. GPUD meeting.
Okay, if there's no changes to the agenda. I'd like to get a roll call vote of those in favor of adopting. Andy?
Uh, I.
Or motion? You need a motion? Help to make a motion of that vote.
Motion to adopt.
I'm in favor of adopting it.
Motion and adopt.
Okay. Alright. Okay, so Andy, you're, you're in favor of Martha?
Hi, yes.
Okay, and did you, did you, did you, William?
Hi.
Okay. So the agenda of adopted public forum. Yes, ma'am.
Bonnie, we were just saying, first of all. I would like to know the spelling of the funding director's name. In the left word packet, there were three spellings for Mr. Lawrence or whatever. One, he's a junior. Then there's no E on the end of his name. Then there's an E on the end of his name. How do you spell his name?
No E with a junior.
But I can see that.
No E. With a junior.
And your junior.
I am a junior.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I just want, if, if there's no other public, I just wanted to announce. These are here for availability. We're gonna do a couple of outreach campaigns with the public. So. On the seventeenth, we're gonna do coffee with the GM. And who? So I'd like to invite the public out to that event. And there are flyers here, and they will also be posted on our Facebook and around the. And then on the twenty-fifth, we're gonna do tacos with the GM at Red Rooster for Taco Tuesday. So I'd love to have anybody out who wants to come in. Just ask questions or, or spend some time. So. Please come on out and, and make it a day. I'd like to invite you, President McDonald, to the coffee because it's in your neck of the woods.
Decline.
Decline.
No, I, 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 you're taking. We, five days off.
Then I, then I understand that they.
You said coffee, what time? Eight o'clock? Eight AM?
Eight.
Yeah. Maybe I could head on out right after.
Sure, okay. Stop by for ten minutes.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's it.
And where's it gonna?
Are you treating the public or are they buying their own food?
They're buying their own.
You might make that clear. Sometimes they think that. That you're beginning serving.
It's.
Not coffee, but like tacos.
How big a group do you want? That would be the.
It should, it's just to, to outreach to the community, that's all.
Understood. Okay. Any other public comments just here for the ride?
Well, no, actually, I was asked, I'm here by the owner of this property that I manage, the, like, I'm a long part. The owner.
Okay.
Asked me to attend the meeting. I don't know what input I can give or whatever I might get out of it, but she asked me to come.
Okay. That's, that's fine. Okay, minutes of the last meeting. Everybody have a chance to peek through it, so it's lengthy.
If there was a question, let's Mr. Lawrence's spelling read and, uh, to, uh, a run through on that, that's, that's easy.
The budget owner.
Oh, boy.
It was actually less expensive than Staples paper.
Can we go, can we go right over to that one over there? See the, the order?
Every time we order paper, we shop around.
Yeah.
So that was less expensive than Staples.
On the record, we got good paper.
Oh, wait a minute, that's two sheets.
It's still nicer.
It's still nicer and whiter.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Costco.
I guess I buy the cheap stuff.
Costco.
You, you, you talk about.
This was change.
And, and prices going up and prices going down. My wife went to Rayleigh's for the first time in a long time.
Uh-oh.
And little plastic bags that you pull off the wheel are now ten cents a piece.
For your vegetables?
Oh, really?
Thank you.
Even at Rayleigh's, seems like.
I didn't think they could charge you for those.
We're only there.
Yeah.
We were once there. Vegetables.
Rayleigh's?
Those ones.
Up on.
Horseville Drive.
Horseville Road?
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, did you open up a can of worms.
Yeah, evidently.
Completely derailed our meeting. I see, and you know what people are passionate about.
I just want everybody to know that we're not the only ones changing all the time. They do wainscot for women that combine fingernails with.
Open the bag.
Yeah.
Alright. Sorry. Alright. With the change to Mr. Lawrence's name, if we find any typos in there, I think that would be an option for the approval.
Great. And I found one other one. Chairman Fisher's not Chairman Fisher yet, but he will be. So it's on page eight. At the bottom. Vice. I'm, I'm thinking I might have to get weaponized and go find his house and bring him to the next one.
He'll be.
Okay, so anything else for the previous minutes? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion approval?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving right along. On our informal items, grant update.
Uh, yes, so, um, I have some good news and some. I guess, well, I guess.
That's good.
In different news, I'm still working on some stuff. Um, we're working on, the state appropriation bill came out, which was Senate Bill one oh two. Um, so our, our budget items were not included in there, and it may just be that there's another budget charter that's coming out after it. Um, so the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was. Uh, promised to us by Senator Gill. Um, we're still working on trying to make sure that we can, um, obtain that, that funding. The appropriation for, from the federal government, I received a timeline. So basically, our timeline looks like. August, we'll start meeting with the EPA. Sep- September will be, um, the final approvals. And October, we should receive funding. Um, I've started to meet with some of the tank manufacturers to get some costs and. To, uh, en- ensure that the location that we deemed will be a suitable location to build this tank. And. We may or may not need additional funding because we may or may not be able to build as big of a tank as originally requested. So. The one point five million dollars may cover the full cost for the tank. Uh, Cal Fire, we're just waiting. Any day we should hear about whether or not we've received that grant. Um, I wanna say it's probably gonna be sometime around July fifteenth. So. Hopefully, fingers crossed, we know at the next, uh, finance meeting. And then, uh, the HM PG grants, um, that is going to just kind of be a while before we figure that out. The, it's just that they said it could be anywhere between six and eighteen months. So, you know, that basically means it'll probably be closer to the eighteen. Whenever they tell you something like that. Um, the, the grant we've been awarded, we've started to work on environmental. Um, I'm actually working on an agreement so that. Uh, we will get the engineering for that paid for, which will be really nice. Um, that is still in the works, so I can't really disclose. Um, what's happening there, but I will be able to disclose that once that agreement comes out. And that is to replace. Uh, some of, or not replace, but align the, uh, canals right above. Right below Tunnel Hill and right below our hydro. So we're gonna be about, be able to do about fifteen hundred feet of tunnel lining. And there may be a chance we can actually do more tunnel lining if we receive, uh, there's a couple of products out there that we're vetting. That are, uh, kind of like. Big carpet that you lay down and then you wet it and it becomes concrete. So we're hoping to maybe, uh, be able to do it more cheaply than, uh, they have to, uh, trowel and, uh, do all that.
Forums and all of that.
No pump, no. So it's just a, a big roll. Kind of, I don't know if you've ever seen a big roll of sod that they put on golf courses. It's a big roll of concrete and it has the. Uh, it has the, uh, netting, yeah, mesh, yeah, I think you in the, uh, rebar in it already. You lay it down and they pin it to the ground and you wet it and it, it hardens. And so it's about yay thick and. Seems to be much cheaper than, and less labor intensive, so.
Excuse me, are you, the grants you're bringing, are they off this page?
No.
Page twelve, committee members, GPUD ad hoc grants, update?
Oh, yes.
Why am I gonna say?
Yes, yes.
Not the same thing.
Thank you.
Sorry, I, I wasn't sure what you were showing me. I apologize. Um, and then, um, then some of the other grants that we're looking at is a brick grant, which is building resilient infrastructure in communities. That would be, um, potentially building us, uh, an additional reservoir. Um, we also have, um, NR C S C W P that we're looking at. So that would help us with erosion. Unfortunately, they have not said that it will be, um, what we're hoping for. They're, they're kind of trying to give us other money for things that we're not asking them for. So it's not really working out the way we want it. So that one may fall away. Another thing we're looking at is, um, automated metering infrastructure, heat tanks, um. Uh, convert the canals and the effort to, uh, to pipe. And lining the lower country canal. So there's still quite a bit to do on that. And then to add. Um, and I'll steal a little bit of Director Stovall's thunder on this. We are working on, um, potentially a USDA grant that would. Um, help with energy production. And so. Uh, right now, we're kind of vetting Stumpy, the Stumpy hydro that we have right to. Um, and hopefully that we can, uh, maintain or, uh, obtain some money. To pay for that. We don't have any costs. So we're trying to do some preliminary examinations on what it might cost. And that would be my grant update. If there's any questions.
Have you seen the concrete? Madding? Have you, I mean, have you seen it in action?
Um, so, so in person, I have not, but I was at a, a trade show, and that's where I saw it. I, I, I held it in my hand. Um, and they have, you know, testimonials, and they were gonna come out and, uh, give us a, a sample to, to put so that we could test it.
Is it a pre-cut? Recut. Well, I mean, you know, you got canal and you've got canal.
Yes.
Is it just gonna?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. So, so it, uh, they, you start like six inches on the top. You, if, if it forms, this, it, it forms down, and then you, you pin it here. You forms down and around, and then you pin it here so it doesn't fall back into the canal. And then when you wet it, it hardens in the shape that you leave it. It's almost like a form itself.
Oh.
Yeah. No, it was great. I thought it was fantastic. And they, uh, they said they've had good results with it. They, I watched a video of that putting it in, and you know, it's, they basically take the roll that, uh, you know, it's an excavator. And they lay it down, lay it, they cut it with a, uh. Carpet knife, if you know the carpet knife, it's a little knife. So it's not anything fantastic. They just cut with a hook knife, and then they lay the next piece down, lay the next piece down, and then after they get, so far, they start letting.
Terrific, yeah. Can't beat that. Yes, ma'am.
Um, where are you proposing a new rest board? And you talk about high to, it's stumpy. Exactly, and you've actually been at Stumpy and seen what the ground's like at the base of the. Pretty wild up there.
I imagine a pen stock could be run for quite a while.
Even just to get in. Plus create whatever you do to make hydro.
So to answer your first question, there are several locations that we are vetting for a reservoir. The first one is Onion Creek, which is, um, adjacent to Stumpy. It's approximately, we could amount to about four to five thousand acre feet of water. The other area where we're looking at is Canyon Creek, and we don't know, uh, but that's just something that we are vetting at the moment to see if it would work. To answer your second question, uh, they do this all the time. Um, yeah. We're not looking to, you know, doesn't matter how wild it is down there, if, if, if it, a hydro is fee, the world will figure out a way. I believe you have a question.
Am I looking over here?
By the phone number five three oh three three zero seven three three, um, if you can identify yourself so we can change your name.
It's Cherie.
Uh, yes, Cherie, I can't comment.
Right. Okay, my question is, what's the, um, life expectancy of this rolled out stuff versus gunite? Have they done any testing in that area? Longevity?
Gunite is not working for us, and so the life expectancy is going to be longer than gunite. We aren't doing gunite anymore here at the district because it doesn't last. And so this would be a much longer lasting process.
And can the weeds, um, go up through the cracks? Because I'm assuming there's cracks if you're laying this down, or does it seal the cracks?
Seals the cracks.
Okay, thank you.
It was that we were using one season, one year, was, uh, concrete. The pump. And then how did they have, I heard it was working better.
Is it, is it where they shoot it?
Yeah.
That's, that's gunite.
It's gunite.
And so what it is, is it's a, it's a, it's a. So the way concrete is measured is this measure, how much liquid is in it? So the slurry in the slump. Um, when you put more water in it, you can shoot it with a gun. And so you can shoot it into the canal and you can kind of form it how it gets shot into there. Unfortunately, it doesn't make for the strongest of applications. Right now, we're using, um, trowels and actual, like, concrete trucks. So it's, it's more.
Right now, we are.
Correct.
Oh, that's what I meant. And then, how's that working?
It, it, oh, they look great. They work great. It's just, it's very labor intensive.
So this is more cost effective and longer lasting.
That is the, that is the hope of the R line, yes.
A general question on grants. How do you, um? What do you, what kind of method do you use to search for grants that are applicable to you? And how do you screen them for? I know there is a lot of screening involved in grants. I know that in my day job, um, not, money is not free, even if it's a grant, the administrative burden can be a. Uh, go, no-go, whether it's worth it to you, so.
I will give you a, a, a nice fun saying that you can take away from here is FEMA money is the most expensive free money you'll ever get in your life. Uh, and we are definitely experiencing that right now. Um, we are definitely asking to answer all the questions and ensuring that we're doing everything correctly. And, and, and it's, it's a, it's quite a process. Um, to, to answer all the questions that, you know, the federal government is asking for us. And we're also working through K L O E S on this. So. You know, we kind of get it from all, all different angles. And then on top of that, um, since we don't have a local hazard mitigation plan, we have to work through our county as well, which. They were gracious enough to, to kind of sponsor us in this grant. So we have a, a lot of different, uh, pieces and a lot of different, you know, uh. Situations that we've worked through. Um, obviously, that staff time, so it's not as much, uh, you know, physical, you know, expenditures, but it is, it is staff time. Um, to answer your first question, I, uh, I subscribe to several email lists. I also, um, do periodically check. Uh, grants dot G O B, um, is the, which is great for federal grants, that you can kind of use keywords. You can use, um, a, a search tool that will like, uh, it's called an RSS feed that will send you when something new gets popped up. Um, also, grants dot C A dot G O V is a new state website. That's actually, they did a really good job of fixing that. And you can kind of. Answer a few questions, and they will send you what your, uh, your query is. So, so that's how we do a lot of our searching. And then.
Right.
We, I just want to finish it. To vet, we then send those typically to our grant writer, and then they help us to vet, to make sure that the, we would meet the requirements. And, and, and go from there.
With government grants, is there a long-term involvement after a grant? I mean, you know, the government likes to get their nose under the tent.
Yes.
In terms of our life, so.
Typically, they do, um, what is called, uh, progress reports after the fact. So while you're working a project, so, um, I'll just use the grant that we've received, the canal lining grant. We will have. A progress report every six months of, once that's been awarded. So it's already been awarded. So every six months. We basically have to give them an update of what our progress is. And so. Our first u- update will be that there's no progress because we haven't been able to start yet because irrigation season is ongoing. Um, however, once we start, then we'll start to say, you know, uh, we're gonna meet milestone one. At the expected date. And so there's all these different pieces to the, the scope of work that they send us. And as long as we're meeting it and on track, then, then we are good. Once the grant has been completed and we've gotten our reimbursement and we've gotten our money back. Then we have to do a, a once a year progress report, and they. Depending on, on what program it is and how much money you get, it can go anywhere between three and ten years. The state is very similar. Some of the new state grants, especially some of the new water conservation grants, they're going up to fifteen years for, for getting progress reports because they want to make sure. That you are continuing with the. Outcome of the, of the grant.
That's, that's one theory. The other one is, you know, if they hire more people to do more things, we get bigger government. But that's just my personal opinion.
I believe, Mr. Miller, you have a question from the.
No, thank you, because I. Cherie?
Yeah, I just had, um, what's the name of the company that you're looking at that you saw at the convention?
I would have to give back to you. I'm, I'm, I don't have the name in front of me. I get, I have their card on my desk. I'm so sorry. If you.
Okay. A bunch of them online, of various, all kinds of companies that do it.
Yeah, if you.
Alright.
Just shoot me a quick email and I'd be happy to send you the card that I have.
Alright, thank you.
You can also get notice of grants from the federal register if you decide, describe to that.
I, I don't know what that is, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's published, everything coming out, I think it's weekly. From the government, federal register. And I know the previous. Person CFO or two, but subscribe to that. You can flip through like during the EPA. See that there was an offering of something, and she would send off and see what the flyer was about. And if it looked good, then she'd ask for the forms, fill it out. And sometimes she would get a grant, sometimes she wouldn't.
Okay. Uh, investment funds review.
Okay, uh, so we have a, a document that we're gonna put up on the screen. Um, this is something that is a, uh. We're calling it a kind of a fund summary. This is all part of the pool cash report, but we did rearrange. Some of the information so that it's a little bit more easy to understand. We, last, when we spoke at the last, um. Finance committee meeting, there was some talks about the investments that we have. And how, or, or how we delineate those investments and whether or not, what funds we have for the specific infrastructure we have here. So really, I wanna focus on this bottom section here, and it's these unrestricted and restricted funds. Um, so what you see here is where we. Um, actually, I'll start at the top here. This is, we explained to this sort of, so, so what you see there is the first, um, line is our late or local area agency investment fund. Um, and that is seven, uh, approximately seven and a half million dollars. And that is, um, delineated out further down into the different, um, reserve funds that we have. And so I'll go over that in a minute, but. We also have a money market account, um, but it's, and it's just a, um, our savings account. So there's a lot of money market, but it's just our Eldorado Savings, um, Bank Savings Account. Um, and then we have our business checking account. And so those are the today balances of those, uh, all those accounts. And so that's how much, uh, cash we have on hand. Now, LA is very liquid. It's very easy to move money in and out. Um, starting July first, we are going to be, uh, taking all of that money out of LA. And putting it into some different investment vehicles that I will discuss at the next item. So if we could talk about that later, and I'll talk about kind of why. We're going to also, did you have a question? Or you don't? Did you, we're also going to be removing the money from the money market account or the savings account. And we're going to be putting that in a different investment vehicle as well, that is a, a liquid investment vehicle. And I'll explain that at the next item. So if I could just, if you could bear with me, this is kind of a, a, a part A and a part B item. Um, as we move down into the restricted funds, you can see the different funds that we have. So we have retiree health, smud, hydroelectric. Capital replacement, capital reserve, and Stumpy Meadows. These are the non-restricted funds that are part of our LA fund. So. That seven and a half million kind of breaks down into these different funds, and they get paid for, um, with the, the interest that comes out of LA. Is either goes back into this fund to continue to grow it, or we can move those, those, uh. Uh, interest dollars around for the district to utilize. There's also restricted money. Which all restricted means is you can't spend it on anything except for, um, where it is allocated. So we can also invest this money, and the investment is not allocated directed to those accounts. We have to keep a certain amount in those accounts that we have as the original piece, but anything that is generated over and above that can be moved around throughout the district. And so those are the restricted funds that, um, I wanted to discuss with all you. And so just a couple of them, and you'll notice there's four in red, and. The reason those are in red, uh, those were old bonds that we had, old, um, uh, reserve funds that we had, but they haven't been active since the Tyler conversion. However, they're still within our system, so we still. Uh, technically keep them until we are gonna fully close them out. But, uh, a couple of notable ones is Kelsey North, Stewart Mine, um, Garden Valley, and those are all different pieces that, uh, the district that have been added or improved on. That are now restricted and can, and, and any money generated, so any property tax or any money that's generated from in there, and then assessment district has to be spent in that assessment district, can't be spent outside. Um, there's a couple of other ones. So the state revolving fund, these are, um, there's one from Walton Lake, there's one from Sweetwater. And then we also have some old grants that we still could potentially get some, some funding for, so we keep those in there. Um, and then there's also the Sweet, Sweet Water Treatment Plant Reserve Fund, and that would be, um, something to pay for any i- issue that may happen at the Sweetwater plant. So I'd just like to maybe stop here and, and see if anybody has any questions, or maybe Jessica was really awesome at putting all this together. And so maybe if there's anything I missed, I'd just like to, to turn it over to her for just a second, if she wants to jump in on anything.
I just did want to mention, the reason I put those in red, um, the old bonds that have been, uh, completed and paid off. Is that they're still showing up on the pool cash, and they're still showing up on the budget to actuals as zero. Budget, but there's actuals because our LA disseminates that, that interest into all of our restricted funds. So the reason why in this, if you look at the second column, revenues. There's revenue amounts down here because that's all LA interest, usually. Some of them actually have revenues. Um, the non-restricted funds because, you know, the supplemental fee and. The other things that we, the property taxes and things like that, because Stewart Mine. And Kelsey's, Kelsey North have, we still get property taxes for that. But most of it is LA interest. So I'm just putting it in here because I didn't want. It to not be in here, and you say, well, it's on the pool cash. So some of them do have allocated balances. But we could put those somewhere else. We would just, I couldn't find a policy on what to do in that. Instance, so that maybe something that has to go to the board, where when we close out a bond and it's got a balance that, that goes where. I, I'm not gonna do anything with them until we have a policy. But the ones that, the ones, the red ones have a zero balance, zero activity, no LA interest, no nothing. So. Those can be closed out of the system and forgotten about.
Right. Any other questions? Thank you. Bonnie?
Sorry. Um, the Garden Valley, Kelsey and Stewart Mine jungle. Those were bonds. Back before I started in two thousand and eight. And when the bond was paid. The people got the money, or the district got the money at the time and spent it. So since then, property tax, they've, they've been paying back. The bonds. Um. So I wonder how you consider it a balance where we have money when we're, we're paying back bonds that we spent.
Because.
Like two thousand eight, two thousand twelve.
The reason is, is because you. The reason is because you, the assessment is for the the property and you have a balance, and we pay out the bond, we paid back the bond. Slower than it comes in, so we're able to take that and reinvest it, and that's where some of the money comes extra. That makes sense. It's not funds that we have here, it's funds that are in that seven point five million. So all public utilities, all public agencies can't be for profit. So every dollar that's in that fund has to go somewhere, we can't keep it, we can't like make money. So that, just because it's in that account, in that seven and accounted for in that seven and a half million, it's still gonna get spent on the bond that was originally. Assessed. But we are able, while we have it here, we're able to invest it in while it's in our possession until we pay it back, and so. We just can't move money out of that account.
Okay, well, the only way to go back and say research those is old files. And according to Stephanie Beck and Nelson, he used to be the inter manager. Um inter general manager before, I don't know, before quiet. Um when Saunders was working at home, when we were everybody sheltered a place and whatever. A lot of these file boxes went to either his house or Gloria's. Have we gotten them back in case someone wanted to research back to the original room?
I will say on the record that no boxes were taken to the board of directors houses. That is a very a boldness statement.
And I do have an updated debt services agreement and amortization schedule from the the debt servicer who. NBS who services our our bond.
Cherie.
We know exactly how much we've paid.
Okay, well, it's we overpaid in Garden Valley on our bonds, our bond is paid for. And there was a decision about four years ago that they were going to keep the money instead of refunding it. For repairs just for Garden Valley. And that's what's reserved just for repairs in the Garden Valley um pipe area. And that's what happened bec- the bond started around nineteen seventy six and they were thirty year bond. So that extra money was overpaid, the bond is paid. So they stopped collecting it, but they, nobody stopped it in time. And we got, and we were overcharged technically, the board voted to keep the money in an account for repairs.
And and that's what we're trying to show here is that the money is still there and it's it's able to.
Yeah, it's just reserved for the Garden Valley repairs. Um okay, so my other question is that whatever you just showed on your PowerPoint is not in the meeting packet.
You are correct, that that was stated in part of the meeting in minutes afterwards.
Uh then, why didn't somebody put it on the website? I just checked the website, there's nothing up.
I just handed it out.
It's just a handout in the meeting.
Well, can you actually put it on the meeting packet for us Zoom and telephone people?
We, I just stated that I will include it with the meeting.
Okay, but since I'm not coming to the meeting, I'm on the phone and I don't have advantage of that. Why isn't it, why can't you just put it on the website when you have something the day of the meeting?
Cuz we're in the meeting.
I just stated that we will be placing it on the website, I understand.
But it should have done through the meeting cuz I have no access to it. Is it a new document or one that you've presented before?
It is a new document that is a reorganization of a different document, so that is held a different, slightly different story that we're able to. Be more organized with.
Okay, well, need to go on the website before the meetings.
It would be ideal, but I just got it myself as I showed up in the meeting, so. We'll continue to strive for uh course perfection in the future. I just wanted to say that that there are times especially now where we might not prepay a debt. My obligation or liability cuz we'll need more from the best group here, so we're trying to be uh petty wise. Uh and with our resources, we take get most advantage of it, so you might see balances here or there. Or we would normally maybe pay it off, the interest rate we're paying on the debt is higher, so. We're 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 fingers on the pulse of it these days.
But I uh if you'll indulge me. To go to part B of this, unless there's other questions from the finance committee, I'd be happy to continue to stay here, but. If you'll indulge, I'd like to go to party, which is kind of the new investment vehicle that we plan to do. So um as of. It was the February meeting. The board passed an investment policy, and that was embedded here at the finance committee meeting. Uh so I really appreciate all of the uh. Uh you know, insight and and help that we had with that. I will say up until today, Jessica and I have had quite a struggle to initiate that policy and. I I will give Jessica tons of kudos because she has worked extremely hard trying to get a bank account set up for us. You uh never knew how much it, how hard it was to set up another person's bank account when you're trying to do it and you're not, you can't just go in and show your ID. Uh it had to be all done through uh the internet and through phone um. So we now have a US bank account that is a what they call a safe keeping account, and so. It is not a traditional bank account like uh you or I would use where we would go in and our money is right there in a checking or right there in a savings. It's more akin to a pass-through bank account, and so this pass-through is the the US bank is kind of the FDIC insurer of our money. Um and then we are able to take it and it's invested out of that bank account, so. Technically, we don't have any money in the US bank, but. Well, basically we do, so it is, it is invested through the US bank into these other fund. Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
It's hard to hear myself, uh I come in my ear after I talk. So. The the investment policy has allowed us. A little bit more flexibility to take some of our money out of the life account. And utilize these other um investment vehicles, and so the reason that we're not. Most agencies are are moving away from life or 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 less of their money in late life. Returns right now are approximately two point seven five to two point nine five percent. And and the reason for that is because they actually follow a different curve than the actual market. So they're slower to catch up to where the market is, um it has to do with the long-termness of their of their funding portfolio. So it's not even that they're doing egregious, it's just they wanna be more consistent over time so people can plan. Um these other investment tools that we are looking at, which is a. Camp or California Asset Management Program. And then another one called California Class, and these have all been talked about in previous board meetings and previous finance committee meetings, so. All of these documents are all public documents that have been put out by these different organizations, so they're very readily seen on the internet, all you have to do is. Do a quick Google search. Um they will also be included in the minutes as well. Um so California or if you can or California Asset Management Program. They are getting a uh a yield of about five point two percent right now. As opposed to that two point seven five to two point nine five, so we can really see a growth on our money. Um that that life just can't keep up with, and so. Where we will be utilizing this, um so of the money that we have invested, we are able to take about thirty percent of that. And put it into um different um maturity rate CDs. Can't do more than thirty percent, it's a it's part of the state law. So we will utilize those um different rate CDs, we can get CDs that go all the way up to almost six percent if we wanna put our money away for, you know. A little bit of time, uh like there are three to five years and we can get like six percent. So we're gonna take and and utilize that high interest uh earning potential with. A portion of that money and then the rest of it, the seventy percent will be invested into camp. And what's called California class, and there's a reason why we're using two, um a little bit of against the advice of our investment. Um um help uh partner, but I'll I'll explain kind of my realm of my reasoning for wanting to do it. So this camp one will be the kind of long-term reserve account, that is what life is, so the seven and a half million. Will be broken down into the thirty percent to CDs and the rest will go into camp. With the money market account that we have, which right now the balance is approximately two point three million dollars. That earns about point one percent interest. So we can park our money there forever and on two million dollars, you know, we could see two hundred dollars a year and and interest. Or we can utilize California class and California class right now. Is seeing. Yeah, I'm trying to see if they have a number on here. Theirs is about, it's 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 in the fours, I think it's like four seventy five, four point seven five percent. So we can either stick with the with the savings account and earn the point one percent. Or we can take that two million dollars and we can transfer it over to California class and earn four point seven five percent return. Now, the reason California class is a good vehicle to do this with is because it is liquid same day. So it is not like we're parking our money somewhere where we don't have access to it, and one of the reasons I wanna do it. Brought up at the last board meeting when we um addressed the budget was. We are required to have a six months of 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 money on hand in case of of. The property tax is not coming in or a case of emergency, we need to have the ability to take money out of a bank account and put it. You know, and make checks and do what we have to pay our bills. I wanna be able to take and look at California class, and I wanna see what is there, just like I can look at my savings account right now and see that there's. This two point three million dollars in there, that is our six months reserve. If I take it and put it into California class, it will not be associated with this camp. I could do it in camp, but then it's almost like this one big number. And it doesn't show the public the transparency of where the six months re- reserve sits, so that if. You as a finance committee member or one of our board members comes to me and says, how how are we doing our six months reserve? Our operating reserve, I can pull up the account that is in California class and I can show them how much money is in that account. And then we will re- we will work with El Dorado Bank on kind of raise our thin margins to make sure that we're we're not having to. Uh lose out on any of those potential investment returns. And so those are the different investment vehicles that we have identified and will be utilizing at the district. Oh, absolutely.
As hard as I try to remember. We were just trying to decide, as I was coming on the board, it was a four or six months and we compromised it five months, hundred fifty days.
Hundred and eighty.
Donors and I talked this week and we could not figure out when it went to a hundred and eighty. But but there was a chance, and I I thought I'd ask that question, so we were sure.
Last April, April of twenty two.
Okay.
Yeah, so we we actually looked at this and um it was um Jessica found.
It was a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah, or a hundred and eighty.
And yeah, the discussion was, should we raise it to one fifty or one eighty? And the board voted unanimously unanimously for one eighty.
Was one eighty?
And that was last April, the resolution I can.
It was about the November before that, wasn't one fifty? Okay, but but that would be the latest then, okay.
Well, it was, it was before I started, so. We changed it in November, then it would be, it would be different, but. The last resolution that me and Jessica looked at, it was, the the vote would be to, you you had a decision to make, it was either one twenty. Or one eighty, and the the decision came out to be one eighty.
And I remember that's.
It was a long meeting.
Yeah, yeah, now remember, as I was entering the board, because I was gonna be on the board that December, they asked. Director Thornburg and I what we got, oh, okay. Why not one fifty and then the the other board said, let's do one fifty, that was a year before you guys got on. So sometime it changed from then till April to be one eight, six months. And that's good, but that's not what I remember, Saunders, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, and we can, we can discuss that um on offline if you like, um and show you the resolution.
And and one other thing I wanna mention, um you're at at that point one percent um. Savings rate, you're paying there for the convenience of capital liquidity.
Right, and and so California class is just as liquid as um as as. As the savings account, if we make a a transaction request before eleven o'clock in the morning, we have same-day liquidity. If we make it after eleven AM, we have next-day liquidity, so it is is. I've I've kind of spoke to Jessica, we have some numbers that we're gonna leave in the bank account here, just in case we need like. Like instant dated same-day liquidity, we're gonna leave like like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. The El Dorado savings and about a hundred to a hundred and fifty in the checking account, just in case, you know, that's enough that if we have something kind of. Oh my gosh, if you don't pay this by five o'clock today, we're 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 toast, which very rarely happens.
And to make this a practical application, that's a great move. Doesn't get the five point two percent, which is likely here to go up, what I'm seeing to maybe closer to five and a half, and but. But what you don't have is you don't have the restrictions that we will get on that extra percent, and that's why the banks are failing. That's because people are demanding liquidity. And they gotta cash out at a discount, and that's where they're losing the billions.
That's exactly right.
So we're we're.
Read that today.
Yeah, so actually.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's very smart. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna look up what their current, yeah, go ahead.
I got a question for you, um have you considered possibly putting like partial into class and partial into camp?
So that's what, yeah, that's what I'm trying to explain, so 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 the late fund. We're gonna, we're gonna keep like twenty thousand dollars in the late fund just to keep the account active, to keep it rolling. And it may be something that we invest in in the future because again, that consistent rate, if these interest rates go back down to. You know, one and a half to two percent, then it will be important for us to go back into life with this money, so. This is gonna be something where we're gonna be moving money and we're going to be. Bringing uh updates to both the finance committee and the board about how much we're making here. So they, you you all can understand that this is something that we're working really hard at to to maximize this investment. But yes, that camp is going to be for what's in the reserve account now, so that seven and a half million is gonna be spread between CDs and camp. The two point three million in the savings is gonna go into skin the class so that we can see a different balance and we know what is there, so yes, exactly like that.
And Mr. Donald, yeah, and the way that, when that works is um uh it's passive. Investments, but it's not, it's active in in management. So between them, the investment company and and the staff, they're able to manage it. Without, it 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 it's not hands-off. Proactive management, and you can get the same advantage of the longer-term investments as you win on these other lower-yielding. Investments by laddering them, when Mr. uh Fisher also brought up, we have to be always cognizant of the fact that. Uh when when interest rates go down, we can't have them budgeted for items down the road. Farther than the guarantee we would get on our returns, so we we can't have something locked in year after year, we don't know.
So if I can just add um to what your question was before, and I was a little bit wrong in my uh numbers. So the thirty-day yield is is five point two percent, the year-to-date yield is four point, we'll call it four point nine. And and so so we're really close, uh we're really close to even, so it wouldn't even be any less. And this is, like I said, still one hundred percent liquid, um easy in, easy out, um and so we're we're. We feel very comfortable with with putting some money.
It happens to have a change, and a change of comparable interest rates.
Is it slightly higher risk to get the uh slightly?
It's all the same, so this is all insured um through. The the federal government, so we're we're basically have almost no risk in this, this is mostly buying, you know. Treasuries and paper and in 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 buying solid investments that they are, they are doing. And then kind of to answer your question again, to go back to what you said about where we're gonna put money. We are still in contact with that financial advisor and and they may call us up, you know, and say, hey. You know, this is, we got this thing cooking over here, let's put some money over here. Because it's it's got a super high, you know, interest rate coming, and we wanna wanna, you know, move some of this money, so. We're not gonna be, like he said, passive, we're gonna be moving and we're gonna be pretty aggressive on this to try to make sure that it's the best for the district. Um you know, we earned about fifty thousand dollars in in investment income this year. Fifty to sixty, you know, whatever round number you wanna use. I talked to our investment advisor and he said, you are. I estimate three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and so that's the difference, that's how much money difference we could make. Is almost, what is that, seven times more money? And and so that's why you wanna be aggressive like this, because it's worth it to to capture that and and. And and so that's why you want to be aggressive like this, because it's worth it to to capture that and and better the district.
Question. So the late funds, we're doing thirty seventy split, right, in camp? Thirty percent is going to be the ladder locked in. Seventy percent. Is there any short term penalties? I mean, if they're in the account for less than. Three months or okay.
And that's one of the reasons why like cash, class and camp are are being used. Is because you can in and out the money. They're they're both very liquid. So even if we have an issue and the class money can't cover. Then we can go into camp and we can pull that money as well. So that's why you don't want to put everything in a ladder longer term. Um and 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 we want to be able to have something that's more liquid. I don't know if Cherie still had her hand up, but I did see it pop up on the screen that she had her hand up earlier, so I would just maybe ask her if she still did or not. Cherie, do you have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in front of you.
Is it still up?
Yeah, no, I I I didn't see it stay up. I'm so sorry. I just I saw it flash on the screen, so I wanted to make sure that I it's we have a. Uh our shared screen on, so it's a little bit different view and I wanted to make sure you didn't have a question.
No, I don't think.
Bonnie?
Are we still paying a thousand dollar amount to this Optum guy who's during? The hot tip guy?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, the full cash report shows that claim on cash. Change of obviously, it's been as low as eight point nine and now it's ten point four.
Yes.
Maybe five months. So you can't assume it's gonna be ten thousand dollars. How do you?
I'm so sorry, ten thousand dollars?
Ten million.
So.
Again, the full cash report for this month.
And I will tell you the reason why it got down to eight point nine million and that is because the county failed to pay us our property taxes in a timely manner. They did not give us our, we have we have two installments of property taxes at nine fifty and nine fifty. Well, they didn't give us our first one and they gave it to us all at the end of the year is one point nine eight nine million.
I miss you when you would have.
Yeah, and so so. Yeah, that's why it uh that's why it got down to eight point nine million and so. Obviously, that's not something we want, but you know, I can't change his rate structure and if he's he's gonna get based on basis points. And yes, could he potentially go less? I I mean, I'll always, but I think it'd be really hard to go from eight point nine million to ten million because. Really realistically, it's more like the ten million and it fluctuates down to the eight billion. Only in a in a bad situation because the county didn't pay us.
But if you go back to a year and a half, it's never been said enough. It's always been better last.
Well, that is, I mean, we do have to operate, so we operate through the year and then yes. It's it's actually more than ten million right now, a little bit more.
Thank you.
Anything more?
Oh, and we do. We do have a policy, investment policy in place so that it ensures proactive um management, not.
Right, yeah, and I will add to that, that we will have regular updates um quarterly. And quarterly from myself and then by month, by yearly from the investment. Our partners, they will come and do a presentation to the board. So this was not something that they are not just taking a thousand dollars a month and not doing anything for us. They are going to be coming to us and and explaining to us why they're doing what they're doing and how they're doing it.
And in our policy, this board and future boards who wants will be looking or shouldn't looking at this.
I'd just like to add one thing, and that is to the the members of the committee, it was a com- a previous committee. That basically put the firecracker under the pot there to get things warmed up, so. You know, when you think about the fact that you show up here once a month and we talk through things, we do make a difference.
I will, I will tell you, before I even started working here. We we this was, I'm gonna say, I started interviewing again for this position in sometime in July-ish. And in the middle of August, I was already working on trying to come up with how we were going to change the investment policy. I had already reviewed our old investment policy and I had already started to work on some language changes. So it was definitely something that I realized from both the finance committee and the board that this was something important for the district. And we needed to do something different, so that was definitely um at the direction of the finance committee and board members that this was something to. To to make happen quickly.
I want to thank the finance committee for getting on this and getting it done. And especially Mitch. Mitch has been working on this for like four, five years. He's been, he proposes. A long time ago when he's on the finance committee. And it just kind of sat and everybody's sitting on their hands and now it's going. That's good. You're gonna get this done.
It was a team effort, but thank you.
Okay, financial reports.
Yeah, I'll turn this over to Jessica or the public, whoever has questions.
So I just wanted to start off with saying that all of the reports that say period ending June thirtieth. Uh I believe it was, you'll see on the bottom left-hand corner, what it was actually run through, June twenty third at ten AM. It doesn't let you do. The middle, it can't, you can't split the month. You can't do day of. Uh the check reports you can. Things that are a day to day operation, but when it comes to the budget to actuals, it will only give you through the end of the month. So just note the top right date is not the correct ending for these financials. Because you'll get another one June thirtieth that'll look different. Um and then, of course. Our auditors are just now finalizing fiscal year twenty two's audit and then they're gonna roll straight. We'll get a report that'll. Right to be brought to you guys as well as the board. Um and then they're gonna roll right into this year's audit, which should end, we should. Usually, we should expect a hard close around October. So that's what we're shooting for is a hard close to this fiscal year, October-ish. That should be right. I think in the past I've seen that it's usually through December. Um but I want to get on that track where we have a regular auditor that completes the process, knows where we are. Knows the health, the the financial health of the district and they're not searching through like we have been with this auditor who's brand new. So now that they know our finances and they know where everything is, that this next audit will just be a lot quicker.
And and I think the plan is they're gonna finish this audit and they're gonna be ready.
Yeah, they'll just keep going.
It'll be um from this fiscal year now, so. We have a little bit of time until our uh is I I August, I think August is our drop date, right?
No, so it'd be it would be October. So usually, like last year, I was doing that too. So any revenue that we get in. That services were rendered during this fiscal year, so we just sent out the May-June billing today. So that should be hitting a store near you. No, all our, it should be hitting our customers this. The email bill people should have gotten it today. Or they will be by the end of the day. It's like five thousand emails being sent out right now, so it should. Hit everybody that's on paperless billing tonight and then the paper bill should be received next week. All of that billing revenue, that water revenue will trickle in all the way through September, October. So September is when our next bill comes out. Everything that hits us before that next billing cycle is backdated to June thirtieth. So all of that, these revenues will change because daily we'll be getting in.
And some of the expenses will change as well, because there are certain things that we either order or pay for in this time. And they will, we are actually paid for after July first, just because of the way we um were able to to kind of. Battle that back to this week.
Yeah, there are some outstanding invoices for services already rendered that I I'm like, we need to pay you. So we haven't gotten the invoices in, so those will be backdated also to June thirtieth for any services rendered in this fiscal year.
And I think we have some products that we ordered like months ago that we're trying.
That are backordered.
They're backordered, so we can also um. Backdate those to to report June thirtieth as well.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see the actual numbers when they finally hit to see how they'll say we're to our projections since that. It painful budget process that we went through to see if our projected years. Amounts match up is that that was something that I got to play with and I'd be really curious to see how close they rose.
And you do have a public comment on the internet, but if you want to take any of them to room.
Cherie?
Um yes, was there a reason why the vendor purchasing report isn't a fiscal year? It starts June first. It should have started. Uh July first last year.
What reporting you, you broke up a little bit.
Vendor purchasing report? Yeah, that should have been.
June first of twenty twenty three, I believe.
Twenty twenty two. Well, it should be seven one twenty twenty two through the six twenty three.
Well, this is just one month, isn't it?
In the accumulated.
It's just for the one month. It's six one twenty twenty three, the six twenty three twenty twenty three.
Right, but all the financials that are presented to the board and previously to finance has always started the fiscal year for this report. It's a yearly fiscal report.
I noticed.
There was a dis.
All the months.
Yeah, that that would be a very thick packet. It would be a very thick. So I can produce that for you if you want to send me an email.
It's like two pages. You're only getting, it's the grand total. It's not the every chip. Yeah.
Yeah, I heard this.
Well, well, we can um I'm gonna man the record and and put in the yearly one. I apologize for that, Cherie. I see what you're saying.
Well, that, you know, at the next meeting, it needs to. And then there's also missing that the finance committee didn't see in parts of uh May uh totals. Because some of the financials weren't in uh one or two of their meeting package. A while back.
For the May stuff, we had all the budget, which was all the uh as currently good for the budget process and that's what we included.
Bonnie?
Um a number of years ago. The. Audit group that was like in. I think it's a different theory. You know, you go over the year and auditor it's happened when it's done. You don't have to continue this audit of thing. But when the auditing company came in, all the records were out, so anybody public publicly them if they wanted. And then you wanted to have a special subject, wanted to complain, whatever, and people always complaining. They are, I am, but you could make an appointment with the auditor and Mary Pat would make a room with private individuals. So you could bring up, you know, whatever subject you had, whatever you thought. Somebody was hiding money, blah, blah, blah. Um because the general manager at the time was always hiding money, but nobody ever explained where it was or why they thought that. But the auditor would sit down with them, open the books and it'd be solved in like ten minutes. But you didn't have to complain to the, you know, to the regular people. Um can you do that? Can we talk to the auditor if we have questions?
So the auditor is gonna do a report to the board?
Yeah.
And you would absolutely ask questions of the auditor and that process. You can't, you're you're talking about, you know, years and years and years ago, I mean. Give me the date when Mary Pat was the general manager here. Give it here.
Oh. Probably two thousand six to two thousand thirteen.
She was.
And I was on the board during that period time.
So this is, everything is done by computers. So and and we have everything in our system. I mean, opening up the books is not, we don't have a book anymore. We have, we have the internet. We have Tyler.
No ledger?
No ledgers anymore. Yeah, we're not, we're not writing this stuff down anymore. We, so if you want to look at something, ask for it.
And there's nothing to hide. I mean, you have just submitted public information requests and you'll get everything we have.
It's not hiding. It's, you do, do you agree? You think something, I think some of these, I think Tyler has made strange. Figures on your pool of cash. Except that every time I ask the guy, the board people about the CDF ALT things. Nobody responds. Actually, nobody responds to any of my real questions, but that's all right. In the board meeting.
You need to ask the districts, not.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you what what. Send us an email and ask us what you're what you're trying to find out. I've been very upfront with you and I've I've responded to every email you send me. Every email you send. I even respond to your voicemails and I send you whatever we have. So if you have a question, we are an open book. You know, I obviously don't have a ledger. We can't open up a ledger, but we are an open book. We are gonna be as transparent as we can. We can't hide anything from you. It's against the law and I would never hide anything from anybody here. So if you have something you want to know, ask us.
I'm not trying to hide. I'm talking about some of the definitions I don't agree with. But then, you know. Send a new email. It'd be much easier. Perhaps sometime I could just call you and say I have these questions. With respect to board package and where could we be for a few minutes?
That would be perfectly fine. I would like to, the reason I respond to your voicemails in writing is for the record. So I want you to see what I'm saying in case it's ever uh stated that I didn't respond to your voicemail. So that's why I'm sometimes putting it on the record in an email, because an email has a written record that has to be saved.
Well, I know that and sometimes my mail doesn't work. But another question, when you send an email, you sign off, they push lighter, blah, 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 and then there's a logo. Under it, there's a paragraph that says this email is confidential. If you want to forward it to anyone, you have to have written response from us that permission to send it forward. Isn't that a little weird?
Well, I mean, do you take things out of context or you try to uh edit or adjust the email, which is you can do? You can forward my email and you can change what I wrote? I don't think that that's fair.
I would change what you like.
I didn't say that you did, I said you could. I said you could and say you did, I said you could. And so that's what we're trying to avoid is is the the potential for uh nefarious people. Changing my language.
Is that a statement on the bottom of every email you send?
Do you ever get it?
What?
You forwarded my email earlier. Did you get it? Did you get my written permission to forward it?
No.
Oh, and I didn't go after you?
Sure.
No, I'm not. It's it's a, it's a, it's to cover the districts legally. I can't. Come after something, say, say something happens. Who knows what could happen? Somebody could come back and try to sue us because you changed language. I'm not saying you did, but you could or somebody could. And then it's it's a whole different thing. I have to go back and show that, see, I. You're supposed to get permission before you do this. It's not willy nilly. You can't just send out my emails to everybody.
But they're not private.
They're a record. They're a public record.
Yeah.
So.
That's why I forward them.
Yes, but when you get a public record, you're supposed to do a PRA, which is where a written request would be.
That's what Cherie is. And I and I just want to make one little quick, you send a lot of the correspondence to me and I appreciate that, but Nicholas ninety. Five percent of the time might be, or the staff would be better at to handle it because they have access to the dates and the times so that.
I don't ask for responses. I didn't want.
I just want to let you know, because I don't, the better qualified person that's doing it, I might.
No, I figured people aren't gonna respond. I'm not even asking for your opinion. What I want is that you know. This is an answer or this is what I see happening. And that's up to you to do something with it or to ignore it.
I make sure if I don't, if if there was ever a time where I thought it was being ignored, then hey, Nicholas, you get that. Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Um resolution of accepting officer positions.
I have a question about that. So I noticed it said adoption will confirm the officers elected to serve for the twenty twenty four calendar year.
Oh, it should be this year, sorry.
Sorry, Steve, you're never getting out of this. That would be good.
That's why I didn't make sure.
So it's just fiscal year, it's a, it's a, yeah. Honestly, I I make that mistake all the time because. We're gonna fiscal years, you know, you know, everybody has a different fiscal year, federal government, state government, us. And then a calendar year, so it's always a confusion. So I apologize for that. Didn't catch them. So um to uh to facilitate this, uh we would like motions and uh seconds and votes on all three positions if. So, uh, to, uh, to facilitate this, uh, we would like motions and, uh, seconds and votes on all three positions if, uh, if the committee will allow.
Right. For president.
Hey, chairman.
Sure. Yeah, oh, yeah. Prime minister. I tried to, I tried to help. I would like to make a motion that Andy Fisher become the chairman of the committee. Second. All in favor?
Uh, we, um, we're, we're assuming the, uh, with the motion is the calendar, the change.
Oh, yeah, you'll extend my term, which I want to make sure you don't extend yours.
I'm not sure I want to accept it unless, I like this language. I'm on it for Christmas there.
Are we at this vote?
Anyone?
All in favor?
Anybody?
Aye. Done. Okay. For vice president.
Chair.
Pardon? Secretary of Defense. Sorry. Yeah, there, there, there you go. That's better. I can do that. Okay. Okay, for last, we have our, my good friend, William Gurrick Jr. I'd make a motion that we put you into the vice chair seat. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And for secretary, beside you, you don't get off. I just want to know you're still with us. Um, would like to nominate Martin Hallett for the, for the secretary's position. Second. Each two.
Do I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can vote. We all did, so it doesn't matter. You've been outvoted whether you vote for yourself or not.
No escape.
Okay. Now, that's done. So what would you like for us to do?
Adjourn?
Fiscal year begins, what, Saturday? So I'm, I get the party until Saturday.
That's right.
Um. That'll be at the board meeting. Yeah. We did receive a letter of resignation from Ms. Charlotte Miller and so we're gonna recognize her at the next board meeting. So we're very sorry that she's not gonna be with the finance committee anymore, but we did receive a letter. We're gonna give her a nice, uh, letter congratulating her first service at the vice board meeting.
I also wanted to mention the change in.
I was gonna rather do that. But Judy, I'll let you, uh, go ahead and talk to it.
Okay, so it took me a while to get comfortable in my, in my new position. And now that I'm comfortable, it didn't make sense to me that the finance committee, which is an advisory committee to the board, was getting information, financial information after the board was getting it at the board meetings. There makes sense to me that at our next finance committee meeting, you're getting brand new information that then will be brought to the board. So if there's any tweaks or changes or if there's more information needed, then when it's presented to the board, that information is presented as well. It didn't make sense to me that an advisory committee is receiving financial information after it had already been brought to the board.
Yeah, so any of your comments would be much more valuable moving forward. And that's, that was, the goal of this committee is, is to make it valuable to the district.
Yes.
So I would say that at the next finance committee meeting, it will be hopefully audit information for fiscal year twenty-two, but also the financials for year-end close that are like a soft close, but then also how we're doing in July so far. So it'll be a lot. Then going forward, it'll be that month. And then going forward.
That's great because that, that was one of the reasons that we shifted to when we shifted is we wanted to be in advance of the meeting, not in arrears. Yeah, and then when, uh, when our, like, year-end club, or excuse me, month-end close happens, it's like four or five days.
Two and a half weeks after.
But it's like four, it's like four to five, maybe twelve to, to, to twelve days after this, before this meeting happens. So you'll be, be getting the real-time flows of that month. And then the board at the next meeting will be able to incorporate, hey, what's this question about this check or why is this like this? Can you give us some more information? We're like, oh my gosh, that's, that's, you know, incorrect. Let's adjust that. So when it goes to the board, we'll take your recommendation and, and uh, give those to the board.
Just what you're saying is, I think is, uh, what we got the meetings just prior to the board meeting, which is good. But we still have old information.
Mm-hmm.
So we remove the, the meeting time. We're ready.
But we're still analyzing the, the information that the board already got.
Right, so good.
So that'll be updated after the board meeting.
Yeah.
Because we don't get our bank statements. With the electronic ones, we do, but a lot of our debt servicing companies send us paper statements and because none of us were on the accounts, like the Wells Fargo account for the Walton loan, we didn't have access, any online access. We had to wait for the paper statements to come. Um, I think they still were Chuck Nelson on them or someone, but now that that hiccup is fixed, it's a lot easier to get the bank statements, but we would have to wait for them to arrive in the mail. And so we weren't closing the month until halfway through the next month.
Chairman Miller is in a breath of fresh air because they offered it to do what you were begging and pleading and just to do, right? They wouldn't, and then it gets offered here.
No, but I'm believing.
Yeah, right. It's changing.
Yes, thank you. You can change the little cherry. Now, I see he's trying to get off, he wants to get that letter of recommend, letter of service.
That's proactive. While working as a team, got the gentleman back there tending. We appreciate that today. Coming in, making sure the string line is all.
I'm all about forward thinking.
Yeah.
And it drives me crazy when people don't ask those questions. Well, why didn't you ask this? Oh, I don't know. I'm like, you don't, you don't, you're just gonna take the answer. Okay.
Yeah, kind of like, it used to be kind of like, you know, my wife is two hundred miles down the road on a trip and I say, did you change the oil? You know, it's like the, 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 the cat, the horse was already out of the barn with the finance committee.
Cars were another, they don't, they don't, right past you.
That's right, so.
All right, so I think we have, uh, if you guys want to do any committee comments, I think we kind of already did, uh, and then we, uh, we then say it's the next meeting, if you wanna, that's right. Any specific item that want to be brought up for the next meeting by any of the committee members?
I just want to say one thing. Sorry, back, one step back. I was gonna mention, Melissa, if you want to forward me the minutes from now on before it goes out, do a review, maybe hopefully, if you out.
Okay, yeah, that's perfect.
That's all catching you, catching you, you caught. She does minutes like for three different meetings.
I know, but she's fast.
He does a really great job.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
No, no particular items for the next meeting now, since we're kind of into a new year. Like I said, the one thing that I want to see is how closely we came in projecting the old year.
That'd be helpful.
Because that was a foundation for the budget.
We'll have the budget, um, that will be, the, the year end and we'll be able to go back and look.
Has the new budget been finalized?
Yes.
In, in years past, after the budget was finalized and there was no request from the board for action items to be looked into by the finance committees, or it was disbanded. Mr. Miller, Chairman Miller had a list of, uh, of, uh, recommended, uh, investigative research, proactive. We're here to help the staff and the board, um, a, 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 a hit list of things we, and we, okay, I'll take that, Steve, and, you know. And, and that wasn't appreciated, but we would appreciate the board, uh, the finance committee if they had. We'll be happy to look into this or analyze this or check into this or assist the staff with this. Um, let's, you know, let's get available to you what, what, what we're asking.
Right.
You got something like that?
No, that's good.
You can talk about your next meetings.
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the, the reaction of the board at that time was they just disbanded us.
And use for, and use for rubber stamp at budget time.
They wanted no input out of the finance committee.
And, and we definitely do value what this committee does and I value it. So you don't think you're a rubber stamp and and, and we want the input and we value all that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, I, I do want to say that I think the budget process, it is hot in here, but the budget process that we went through, I thought was as rigorous as any I've gone through. And I've gone through a lot of them. So I thought it was well done. I thought it was very thoughtful. I think that it will be interesting to see how well it matches up to, you know, prior experience, because I thought that we've you staff in particular has covered all the bases that I could possibly think of. I thought it was very well done and, um, there you go, Stan. I just wanted to compliment them on those.
We all appreciate that. I will definitely let them know that Jessica, uh, spent days and months and weeks working on it.
I just wanted to make sense.
Yeah. Okay.
Be accurate.
Uh, our next meeting date is, who knows when?
It's the twenty, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-eight?
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven?
Right.
Twenty-seven?
Who started the Gبر بری؟
There you go. Okay, well, then I say that I vote that we adjourn. I'll second that.
And, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good.
Great. Thank you. Cherie, if you're still there, thank you.
You guys want to?